I appreciate that. Welcome to the Sanford City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 403-A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using the meeting ID 81304512636 and password 193627 or view your computer at the link available on the calendar on our website. Members of the public may submit comments via email to info@sanfordmain.org. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
The republic.
Which is ten. One nation. Under God.
God.
Divisible.
Divisible.
Liberty. And justice for all.
Thank you. All have a moment of silence? Thank you. Roll call. Consul Hanselman.
Present.
Consul Stackpole.
Present.
Consul Tuttle.
Present.
Consul Landigan is absent with notice. Consul Hurley.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip is also absent with notice. Hi, my name is Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his Executive Assistant is Larissa Ricketts. Minutes this evening, we have three to approve. Twenty dash one sixty-eight dot zero one ordered to approve the minutes from the special city council meeting held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2020. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. We roll call vote. Consul Hanselman?
I'll abstain because I was absent.
Oh, that's right. Start with it. Consul Stackpole?
Yes.
Consul Tuttle?
Yes.
Consul Hurley?
Yes.
Also, yes carries four to zero. Um, next up is twenty dash one eighty-five dot zero one ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. Consul Hanselman?
Yes.
Consul Stackpole?
Yes.
Consul Tuttle?
Yes.
Consul Hurley?
Yes.
Also, yes carries five to zero. And last of the minutes, twenty dash one eighty-six dot zero one ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session held on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. And Consul Hanselman?
Yes.
Consul Stackpole?
Yes.
Consul Tuttle?
Yes.
Consul Hurley?
Yes.
Also, yes carries five to zero. Thank you for that. Uh, Mayor's report. Really, I just want to comment on the um, property subcommittee and certainly uh, Consul Hurley can chime in and tends to have more information than I would on these kind of events. But we did discuss um, holidays and you know, the tree lighting and things of that nature. Um, it sort of goes without saying that there'll be no parade this year, but I guess we should say it publicly anyway. Um, there was just seemingly no way to safely um, provide that kind of entertainment, kind of an event with the social distancing and the masks and crowd control and everything else that would be required to put a successful and safe event off. So um, I know there will be some kind of tree lighting uh, that will occur. My, my understanding is that Santa Claus will be coming to town at some point here, which is great news.
It's secret, Tom.
I know that, which is, which is amazing. Who knows what time he's going to show up or when it's going to be. So.
As long as we notify him, Tom, right?
He, he's, I've got a special phone that goes directly up to the North Pole, Consular. So it's.
Well, yeah, well, there's hope.
Very official. Um, so you know, we make this uh, this holiday season as festive as we can. Uh, we're trying to find creative ways to, you know, for people to still feel like we've, you know, celebrating the holidays and is from a community perspective. And I know that uh, we've tossed some ideas around of like house decorating, things of that nature. So we'll, we'll continue to roll out information as it comes. But um, as it stands, uh, the holiday parade, the um, I assume the horse drawn carriages, all those kinds of things uh, will not be occurring this year. Um.
Mr. Mayor, I do know, I do know Consul Hanselman has been working on probably more stuff than I have due to last, what happened for me last week. But I do know that there's a dead, there's a Main Street effort to light up Main Street. Uh, businesses, uh, residences. I know there's an effort there. So if people don't know about it, I'll throw that out. And I believe uh, Consul Hanselman has been working on a few odd things with um, Helen Haggerty from Get Fired Up.
Perfect.
Oh, and they don't pay you enough.
Uh, yeah. So just in, in brief, what I would say is uh, check out uh, Facebook page, Sanford uh, Holly Days. It doesn't have a whole lot yet, but we're going to be sharing some fun um, very safe uh, COVID friendly activities and so on uh, for Sanford residents. So keep your eye out for that.
Excellent. Awesome. Any other subcommittee reports this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Zoning, zoning didn't meet last Tuesday. Uh, we discussed uh, mineral uh, extraction inspection uh, and our, our, our resolve, it was just Consul Landigan and myself, but uh, our consensus was to not move ahead with the uh, uh, contracting out for inspectors, but uh, to urge everyone to go back to, uh, I believe it's called the cooperative agreement. And uh, that's certainly the uh, the hiring of or contracting with mineral extraction inspectors should be part of that discussion. Uh, there should be some give and take. Uh, and so hopefully that will uh, that will move forward. Uh, we also discussed uh, car sales at Gold Rush Pond. Uh, and the discussion centered on the fact that there's still some uh, site plan uh, from the uh, original establishment of the business there that needed to be resolved. So uh, once again, we're urging the owner to go back to uh, uh, the uh, um, site plan uh, and uh, resolve those issues, whatever they may be. Um, and then uh, we'll, we'll further discuss the car sales issue. Uh, we did look at uh, the development review fees. I think that was requested by the council. And taking a second look at them, uh, we still felt that they were pretty much uh, revenue neutral and uh, that uh, they did streamline uh, the uh, the uh, the fee process uh, stabilize, I guess, the, the fee process. In other words, there's a flat rate, not a percentage in many instances uh, on those, on those fees. And uh, that we felt that was generally uh, positive and uh, that uh, there was no change that was needed.
Perfect. Thank you for that report. Any other subcommittee reports?
Uh, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, public safety met uh, and we did have a discussion with Officer Small on an update of the homeless situation. I, I told him that we're very lucky to have him. Uh, you know, Stephen was there. I think we've really done a good job uh, there so far. Stephen, I think you'd agree?
Uh, absolutely. It's heartwarming to hear his report. Uh, one of the things that we continue to languish and linger with is, you know, we, we have, if it's still small enough that we, we, we know the homeless people, um, you know, we have regular contact, Officer Small does with those individuals. He knows the individual needs. The continuous disappointment is those individuals that are, are not willing or able to take advantage of the services that are available to them, they continue to languish in that situation. So that's why he works with them on a continuous basis to gain their trust and get them into, to have them make the decision to take advantage of the services that are available for them.
Well, that, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Right, take.
Perfect. Okay. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay. See none. I, I don't believe the city manager has a report this evening. Do I understand that correctly?
Uh, that's correct. The only thing I could offer to you is uh, just a quick perspective on what I'm hearing on, on the COVID numbers. Probably everybody is burnt on that. But um, if I could, I'll, I'll just share a couple of quick numbers with you. Um, get the share going here. This is the last thirty days. You should see a graph in front of you now. The last thirty days, the blue bars being the number of new cases that are coming on board for the state. And you can see the significant ramp up, you know, six thousand, a month ago, we were at six thousand forty-six cumulative cases since they started tracking back around March fifteenth. We're now at ten thousand uh, five hundred and forty-four. Uh, the orange line represents the number of active cases. So if you take the number of new cases, you know, cumulative versus the number of recoveries that have uh, been documented cumulative, this orange line is the differential. Uh, so a month ago, we were seven hundred and forty-five active cases. Uh, we're now two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight active cases. So a significant change over the last month.
I can remember we almost went below three hundred. So just.
Yeah. Yeah. So a significant change. The orange or uh, yellowish-orange line uh, back on October twenty-seventh, this is the York County active cases. So we had a hundred and seventy-eight. We're currently at four hundred and fifty-eight. So the, the second wave of the surge hit York County earlier than it did some other places. Uh, even though our case number uh, continues to elevate and we're still very active here in York County. In fact, the single day count on Monday, York County accounted for twenty-seven percent of the new cases on that particular day. So we're still very, very active in this regard. But again, we're, we're not, we're not elevated to the same level that the state is, is it, is in its entirety. Dr. Shaw notes that this community spread everywhere in the state now, not just in a handful of counties as it was before here in the southern tip, but it is everywhere. So the cases are much more widely dispersed now. Um, looking down here, again, this is just the number of state active cases. Again, and this, this is only the last fifteen days. Try to narrow this down for perspective, but we've gone from twelve hundred and eleven back on uh, November second to uh, more than double, two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight state active cases in the last fifteen day period. Uh, York County went from a hundred ninety-eight to four hundred and fifty-eight. Again, more uh, doubling there. The most concerning of the data really is, is the hospitalization, hospital, hospitalizations, the utilizations, the blue bar being the number of total uh, cases. So on uh, ten twenty-two, you had seven total cases uh, in the state. All seven of those were in non-Icu beds and nobody was on a ventilator. Fast forward to um, Sunday's data was the last day that I had when I put this together for you. There's a hundred and three hospitalizations. Um, but I note that in the earliest phase of this, the predominance of COVID patients were either handled in Bangor or Portland. They were being moved to the major tertiary care centers, being treated there under negative pressure rooms with the ventilators who are more readily available and such. That's no longer the case. They're more widely dispersed across the state. So again, there's a hundred and three individuals as of Sunday occupying a bed in a hospital. Fifty-eight of those are in non-Icu beds. Forty-five are in intensive care unit beds, ICU beds, and eleven individuals are on ventilators. So significant change. A month ago, we had nobody on a ventilator, one, two, and three, and now we've got eleven. Uh, I don't remember today's numbers. I have to go back and look, but we may be as high as seventeen here. Uh, so I'd offer that information. The other uh, information that uh, I would take note is there's been a lot, a lot of discussion on the um, the vaccinations. Just let me stop that share for just a moment. On the vaccinations, the Pfizer vaccination has applied for and received emergency approval. Um, Dr. Shaw talks to us continuously, and I get this information through Southern Maine Healthcare, sitting on their Board of Directors as well. Um, that they reasonably believe that the vaccinations and the state is gearing up for this with the uh, ultra cold storage facilities across the state of Maine. They have pre-existing facilities, they're working with the university systems. They have more cold storage coming in as part of the preparation for this. Uh, they reasonably believe by mid-December between the, around the tenth or twelfth, that those vaccinations will, the Pfizer vaccinations will be distributed into our state. Uh, and it's on a priority basis that is for the healthcare and public, public safety individuals first, healthcare workers first, public safety in the second tier. Uh, I know Maine Health has given its plan to us as, as uh, Board of Directors. Uh, without disclosing all of that uh, information, uh, they can accomplish. So they have their number of doses they need for the entire healthcare system. Uh, it's already filed with the state. Those will be distributed and they can implement that system-wide in a matter of days. You know, far, far less than a week, a matter of days. They would have that inoculation, the first dose uh, done, and then they would move towards the public safety sector, which would include our fire EMS police, the first responders on the front lines of this. Uh, and then the second phase, when it starts to be distributed out to the public, our firing EMS personnel will be part of the training, people who will be trained to help with the distribution system and the vaccination implementation itself. So there's a lot coming forward in this front. Uh, they continue to talk that it's not likely until uh, early spring, April, that it'd be widely available to the general populace uh, and will be distributed in a rapid period of time. Uh, two, if not three, more vaccinations coming that have less of a storage uh, solution to it, that do not, like the Moderna vaccination that's deemed to be the second that's coming online uh, and can be widely distributed without ultra cold storage. A regular refrigerator freezer unit could be utilized for those vaccinations. So much more easily and less costly uh, implementation there. So even though there, it's, it's a very uh, difficult situation at this point in time, and there's been an elevation in the number of deaths, um, hope is on the horizon as far as the offer of vaccinations coming. Uh, it's a very positive. Uh, they continue to encourage us to be diligent as far as uh, the upcoming Thanksgiving Day season. Uh, they, they learned lessons from what happened in Canada there. Their uh, the Canadian Thanksgiving is in October and their numbers increased exponentially thereafter because of the close family gatherings and the people traveling and such under that. So they've, they continue to, uh, continue to make us aware of those elements. But I'm pushing that forward to you. Still, I think the city has done everything that it reasonably can at this point in time as far as local ordinances. It continues to, the doctor continues to propagate that it is the face coverings, the social distancing, uh, the, the cleaning actions and the social gatherings, the um, indoor gatherings, uh, what's accounting for the community spread at this point in time. So they encourage you to practice as safe as possible for the indoor gatherings. So any, any questions on any of that? And if not, I'll conclude my time this evening.
Yes. Yeah, Steve, just uh, I, I don't know if you have uh, have this figure, but uh, looking at total cases, I think it was total cases in Maine on, on that graph, went from about twelve hundred to, is it twenty-four hundred or something like that? Um.
We went a month ago, six thousand to now ten thousand five forty-four.
Okay. So it, it about doubled during that, during that time period. Again, applying an exponent, uh, is it likely to go three times higher, four times higher based on what the experts might be projecting?
Uh, Dr. Shaw stays away from those, those type of protect, projections. He gets into the multiple um, variables that are concerned with that. The media asks him extensively each conference that he does three times a week now about hospital occupancy, hospital capacity, uh, contact tracers and um, investigators capacities and such. Obviously, they're reaching the capacity on the contact tracers and testers because they've changed how it is. They're going to form that, perform that tracking because with, you know, two hundred and fifty plus new cases per day, um, uh, covered over, I think, a hundred and twenty-four caseworkers. It's very difficult to keep up with that particular demand. Uh, there is no, they, they, they say that, they indicate that the state is ready, implement secondary hospital beds uh, on an as-need basis, but they're not there currently. Uh, but they are prepared to do so if, if the need arises.
Yeah. Uh, thanks. Uh, not, not great news, I'm sure. So uh, your, your advice, as you said, about social distancing, hand washing, face, face masks and eliminating large social gatherings. Uh, I think that's good advice for, for everybody. So, thank you.
When you look at the number of uh, outbreak centers, uh, from last Friday through to Monday's report, there were twenty new outbreaks, defined outbreak centers in that short, that short three-day window. Uh, actually, two, two-plus day window, one of which was the Newton Center here in Sanford with, with ten confirmed cases on Monday morning. Um, they're, they're, they're all across the board. They're in schools, they're in workplaces, they're in industrial complexes. Um, they're, they're, they're everywhere. Um, they continue to propagate that as far as the schools are concerned, they, they have yet to see any large-scale transmissions within the school complexes themselves. Uh, they're being picked up as, as um, outbreak centers because of the collecting, collecting of the people in there. But they're tracing it back to the community spread that's evident in all communities at this point in time. So they continue to emphasize uh, anybody and everybody is at risk because community spread is everybody, everywhere. So you need to be diligent.
All right. Thank you for that uh, important information. And thank you for um, generating those charts. That was really eye-opening for sure. Um, any other questions from the council?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, communications presentations, none this evening. Um, public participation? Is anyone here to speak in terms of public participation? If you could raise your hand uh, in the participant sort of portal that you have at your fingertips, that would be great. Otherwise, just go ahead and speak up if I'm not here and you're a senior. Okay. I'm not seeing any public participation this evening. Uh, next up, public hearings. The city council would take public comment on the following, twenty dash one seventy-five dot zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new application submitted by Highmark Farms Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivator License at seventy-two Emery Street, Unit two zero three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. Any concerns or issues relating to the consent agenda?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none. I'll declare the consent agenda approved. Old Business, twenty dash one forty-nine dot zero one ordered to amend Chapter two eighty, zoning regarding the industrial reuse IR zone and repeal and replace land use tables. Decided much regret on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. So I, I believe the zoning didn't actually get to this item uh, because of the length of that meeting. Is there any further sort of uh, discussion or, or issues or concerns relating to this zone change?
I know we have uh, Director De La Valley with us this evening. I note that during the first read, the public hearing process and, and with the council's, council's first read, uh, this has been uh, reviewed on multiple occasions at the zoning subcommittee. The planning board had, had finished its work before the work product that you have in, in the packet here. Uh, and we noted that there were no uh, comments raised and or concerns at the, during the first read. Uh, typically, we address all of those concerns in the zoning, zoning sub, uh, if they are raised, but none were raised during the first read.
Anything further at, at this point from anyone?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
We'll do a roll call vote. Consul Hanselman?
Yes.
Consul Stackpole?
Yes.
Consul Tuttle?
Yes.
Consul Hurley?
Yes.
Also, yes carries five to zero. All right. New Business, twenty dash one seventy-two dot zero one ordered to accept a quote from Fornet Inc. in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars for the installation of new protective net fencing at Benton Park Baseball Field. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. I think I saw Brian come into the meeting. Let's see. Who wants to uh, present this topic, Steve?
All right. I was muted. Uh, Brian is coming into the meeting right now. So let's.
Oh.
As soon as he gets connected.
My guy.
He's sitting in the waiting room.
Thought he was in.
Here before, he must have become disconnected.
Yeah.
Okay. If we could, if we can give him just a moment to connect.
Yeah, of course.
The property subcommittee saw this. I'll just, this is um, basically, everybody noticed that they took down the uh, tennis courts. And they're gonna have a children's play area there. And uh, this is to protect the baseballs from the little league field from hitting the small tiny children in the top playground. Correct?
Correct, Laura.
All right. Brian, are you with us?
He's still connecting according to the Zoom. Yeah.
So I can pick up some details while we're waiting to connect in if, if he's able. So uh, this, the recommendation is for uh, the quote as you see here, Fornet Inc. It is the low quote that was submitted, uh, including uh, with no change orders, uh, no uh, deviations from the RFP that was submitted. It is the recommendation of our uh, interim Parks and Right Director, uh, Brian De Roche. Uh, going forward, it's been reviewed at the property subcommittee and as uh, Consular Hurley indicated is, it is for the Benton Park Baseball Field, new protective uh, fencing, uh, netting to go up to protect and separate the ballfield activity from the uh, forthcoming tot lot that's going in there in lieu of the prior courts. This is within the capital program and it was part of the master plan uh, that's being worked on currently. So Brian, I, I see that you, you just got on board with us. I think your audio is live now. Is there any further comments? I've given, given everybody the indication uh, that uh, the recommendation is to go with, with the uh, Fornet job quote, the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Do you have any further comment, Brian?
No, I think you pretty much uh, stated everything. Um, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions regarding the fencing?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just as more described, if a foul ball gets uh, hit at the Little League Park, it won't come landing, you know, into the tot lot, which uh, obviously no one will be interested in. So uh, it's a good thing and we'll make sure that it sounds to be plenty high and, and plenty far away from the, the ball field to, to capture, you know, virtually all the balls that might come its way. So that's good stuff. Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Um, Consul Hanselman?
Yes.
Consul Stackpole?
Yes.
Consul Tuttle?
Yes.
Consul Hurley?
Yes. I'm sorry. Someone came into my office. Yes.
Okay. And I'm also yes carries five to zero. Next up. Next up is twenty dash one seventy-seven dot zero one, resolved to seek again, excuse me, resolved to seek to again partner with the Maine Department of Transportation for the preliminary design phase of downtown Sanford within, with limits as defined by the scope of the PPI study towards reconstruction of downtown Sanford and commit to funding said project with a municipal match of fifty percent of engineering costs in the amount up to, but not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars in the course of the next eighteen months. Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask uh, Director Hill to present on this this evening, not only on the dollar amount and, and why, uh, but he also has some information to bring you back up to speed as far as the, why this is moving forward as it pertains to the PPI study. So Matt, if you want to take the narrative at this point, I'll pull up any information that, that you want as far as the presentation is concerned.
Sure, Steve. If you'd like to uh, just go to any of those presentation materials that I forwarded, I guess I'll just.
Okay.
Go, go through them. Um, so basically uh, the city uh, and state have worked together with our consultant VHB to prepare the Downtown Planning and Feasibility Study, uh, which is also known as the PPI, the Planning Partnership Initiative. Uh, the process basically gets the public of Sanford involved in, in what we want to see for a downtown, but also checks a lot of boxes as far as Maine DOT's planning needs and the federal government's planning needs in order to move the project forward. So uh, VHB was able, they're familiar with these steps to go through all, all these processes and conduct things like a roadway safety audit and a report, a, a traffic uh, study and, and take a close look at, you know, what Sanford's needs are. Uh, there was a requirement of public outreach. We had two public hearings. Um, the first public hearing was uh, an exploratory, what are the existing conditions? What are, are the needs out there? And the second public hearing was, okay, based on those needs, we came up with some concepts. They put up options basically for each segment of the roadway. And uh, from there, we picked uh, through, you know, input from the public and, and discussion on what are the recommended alternatives. So uh, this is an excerpt of, of the uh, outcome of the second public hearing on what they heard. Reconstruct rehabilitate the roadway sidewalks, get them ADA compliant. Uh, we've been talking about new LED lighting throughout the community and get that installed in downtown. Uh, continue to look at innovative stormwater treatments, uh, upgrading the signing pavement markings uh, and, and safety considerations. Uh, what you'll see out there today, actually, the way we uh, did the maintenance overlay on Main Street this year, uh, that's, that's kind of in preparation, that's kind of tearing the Band-Aid off for downtown Sanford. Uh, that's that's kind of in preparation, that's kind of tearing the Band-Aid off for downtown Sanford. That's basically a mockup of the recommendation from the PPI study. So, uh, there were some comments received about about that parking scenario. Uh, no, it's it's, uh, it's it's food for thought. We're basically living. In some senses, the the parking layout that is proposed by the PPI. Um, so, you know, other things in the area, I talked about parking, uh, some considerations. Uh, we've, we've also come up with a concept, uh, on School Street right at, uh, Washington where we might be able to add a little bit of parking there. Um, I think is a little bit outside the current scope of the PPI, but it involves a conceptual. Uh, reconfiguration of Central Park and downtown Sanford. And then, uh, identifies other other issues on Main Street, School Street and Washington, which is the scope of the PPI. Um, Steve, you want to flip to the next slide there? So, yep, uh, all the crosswalk locations, you know, four max spacing, we've got a few of them in in violation of that right now. And, uh, so that would need to be reconsidered. And then, you know, a lot through a lot of these downtowns that we've been, uh, curb extensions and bump outs. Uh, increased pedestrian safety, increased mobility for pedestrians, um, and, uh, and slow traffic down at the same time. So downtown Sanford, you've got competing interests in that you have to have, uh. You know, vibrant downtown that has to have eighteen wheelers rolling through it. So a lot of discussion we had centered around other examples where where they've been able to do similar reconstruction successfully. One of them was downtown Kennebunk on Route one. Where they were able to widen the sidewalks, they were able to install bump outs and and add parking. Uh, but they still have, you know, an eleven to twelve foot wide lane through there that has to get a, you know, a tractor trailer through. So, um, there's no right solution, but, um, you know, this, the planning portion of it is to get us basically off the ground. Uh, when we first, you know, had this project going forward, the intent was to take it from the PPI and go directly to DOT and get onto their work plan. Uh, in the meantime, things have changed. Uh, the pandemic year, uh, revenues are are in question. And in order to keep this project on track and and on on time, on schedule and and go for that twenty twenty four year. Uh, we really feel it's it's critical to try to partner with main DOT and, uh, forward to preliminary design. Another strategy we considered was trying to just get a commitment from main DOT right up front to go for the whole kit and caboodle. And, uh, we really feel like that's, uh, very overly aggressive at this point. We're we're advocating for ourselves, but we also don't want to be unrealistic. And, uh, so, um, so this this slide is a little bit more about the coordination of of the concurrent activities out there. So we have the main DOT, a VHB, uh, US DOT build grant project, so three single quarters. Main and Emory, main and Washington and main at Lebanon. Uh, the fourth intersection, which would be Washington High and River. Uh, included in the scope of the, uh, reconstruction and would not be in the the US DOT bill grant project. Uh, we've got into consideration other concurrent, such as the Sanford Trails Downtown Connector. Uh, the, we're calling the Mouson Promenade, which is a design we're working on to come up with a ten foot wide continuous multimodal path around number one pond. Uh, two laps of which, incidentally, it is a five K. So I think that we can coordinate further on perhaps with the recreation department, uh, in the future. And then, uh, other other connectors, river walks. We're also moving forward on the, uh, reconstruction of the West Side Village, which is, uh, just to the west of Main Street, hopefully for next year. Uh, that's advertised in February of twenty one and that's Kimball, uh, Shaw Prescott and, uh, the portion of Twombly from Kimball to Maine. So, uh, and then we're also coordinating with, uh, York County Community Action. And, uh, coordinating any transit stops that they might want to have. So, uh, next slide, please. So here's here's a few of the concepts that were included. Uh, the renderings, basically this is the intersection looking on Washington Street, looking at River and High. And we, there are two things here. One was a roundabout. Uh, we ended up not going for the roundabout alternative. Uh, one, there was a considerable right of way impact on the far side of this intersection to a parcel that's yet undeveloped. Uh, and then the other thing was that we're really concerned about, you know, potential pedestrian conflicts, uh, that are associated with a roundabout. We would lose a very good crossing opportunity. We feel like the downtown of Mill District is very important to also have the the connectivity out to the neighborhoods as you proceed up High Street. So if you want to flip to the preferred alternative we went with here, it's just a conventional intersection. And I would note, uh, the rendering didn't quite get this quite right, but on the left hand side of the road here, that 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 sidewalk would actually be a ten foot wide multimodal path there. So, uh, that kind of evolved throughout the PPI study and we didn't really get a chance to throw that in there. But you can see even here, you can see the shoulders there are are too narrow for parking, but also excessively wide for, um, you know, just a standard shoulder. So, so we can actually reconfigure the road a little bit and and achieve that ten foot wide multimodal path on the left side of this picture. So, uh, we've got a couple of other renderings here. Uh, the next one, I believe, is up in front of, uh, the tower on Main Street. And, uh, this, uh, is a pretty popular location. It's an active bus stop on the far side of the street. And, uh, it's it's also, there's also been some demand for crosswalk in this location. So, uh, VHB was able to do a rendering here and came up with, um, a nice crosswalk. And you can see there's some parking installed there, the bus, uh, opportunity is there, the bus there to protect pedestrians. And, uh, it really slows, I I think this this design slows traffic down and and, uh. Mayor Cody, you talked about trying to get to look and feel for downtown, and this is one of the areas that really struggles for identity. Having something like the street trees and the and the lights, the, uh, uh, you know, uh, memorial flags here would. And some of the flowers would bring some of that identity. So, uh, next slide, please. Uh, and here is Main Street looking, uh, Midtown Mall is to your left and you've got, uh, Parkage Bank. And the existing conditions is after the, uh, overlay out there this summer. And, uh, this one. We basically had two alternatives here and one was, uh, the one I didn't choose was there was a median down the middle of Main Street here. Uh, and that actually narrowed the sidewalks up a bit. And so this alternative, you you have the wider sidewalks and and, uh, you devote. Uh, space, uh, to the pedestrians instead, again, kind of maximizing the multimodal opportunities and and putting the cars where they need to be. And minimizing those those crossing distances here. So, um. So that's a nutshell. That's that's some of the concepts they came up with. Of course, the technical details, the traffic, uh, studies, the traffic counts. Um, and the roadway safety audit are important milestones for main department transportation. Uh, but we feel that coming to the table again with main DOT and making a strong, uh, advocacy for ourselves. And, uh, basically saying Sanford's going to do this, main DOT, would you like to come along and and leading the way? That's that's the kind of partnerships main DOT is looking for. Um, then I met with Commissioner Van Note almost a year ago and, uh, told him exactly what we were up to. And lettered him, uh, recently, uh, proposing, uh, this additional partnership. Uh, I forget a report that every single thing that we said was gonna go on, uh, we've we've started in on. We've we've made strides on every single, uh, aspect of that. Uh, we've come through and certainly delivering the the PPI to, uh, you know, project on time. And trying to get into main DOT's work plan is an example of that. So we're continuing to try to be good partners and, uh, this this proposal is is, uh. Basically a sign of good faith, uh, apart to try to partner again.
Excellent. Thank you for that great presentation, Matt. Um, you know, and and kudos to you and the team. I, you know, I, this came up in a meeting, I don't know how many years ago now, and it was more or less a venting, uh, comment for me. And, uh, as far as the what what I consider to be a depleted looking downtown and it's evolved. With an absolute ton of work from you and the team and 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 departments involved. And it's just been a a great collective, uh, effort to to get us to this point. And the documentation and the preparation that went into this is just extraordinary. So thank you. Uh, and please extend that that thank you to to your team as well for what they what they've accomplished already. You know, we're still, we're still years out, but we gotta get to this point to get to that point. Uh, so this is really, really, uh, impressive and 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 exciting. Um, when you see those images of the downtown, it's it's that that's what I had in mind. It it needs to look vastly different than it does now. Um, so I I hope in, you know, five, six years I drive down there and I don't recognize it, uh, in a good way. So, um, thank you for all of that.
Yeah, certainly. It's, uh, several of the department heads, uh, leadership of the city manager and also, you know, having the support of the council on this has been invaluable. So we look forward to continuing to work together at this time.
And and I think the the crux of the the conversation tonight really is around this two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you know, as 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 Matt said in the beginning, obviously budget constraints at the state level are somewhat obvious, but it's it's a little bit of an unknown here. Um, and and do we do we sit and wait or do we do we push on? Um, you know, my my perspective on this is we don't have a choice. Uh, we we have to push forward. Uh, we we need a downtown that looks like some of the beautiful downtowns in Maine, uh, not not what we've got right now. Um, so we we have to keep the course on this and and head down and it's, you know, what will get done one way or another, this project will get done. Um, and that's that's at least my view on it. All right, I know there's somebody in the in the the group that has a question, but any councillors have questions at this point? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just really briefly, one, I'm I'm, you know, exceedingly excited about the, uh, plans. It looks amazing. And the one thing I failed to ask in previous, um, meetings or presentations I was at, I apologize for doing it now. But remind me what the stop process or what the intent is for our our bikers. Is there space or enough of a shoulder? I couldn't tell in the pictures that there is some bikeability with the kind of, um, tightening of the of the Main Street corridor. Is there still space there?
Yeah, I can answer that. Uh, basically the the downtown trails connector, uh, from Sanford Trails makes its way down William Oscar Emery, down Riverside. Uh, on Pioneer and then, uh, hits a trailhead and goes down to the high school. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about. And and it leads to some historical discussion from the council, I guess, on on what the intent of Main Street and Route one oh nine are. Um, and and in my discussions with the with Lee Burnett, who's, uh, on the Trails Committee. Um, we like to talk about about, uh, you know, the SPANX bicyclists versus the BMX bicyclists, like the kids versus the true, um, you know. People that are going to be on the road. And and the thought is that basically the city has a parallel facility here. Uh, being that downtown trails connector that I just described. Um, there is an opportunity, however, to, as that pedestrian multimodal bicycle traffic comes by downtown. That we can improve the connectivity on the sidewalk, say, on like on Washington Street, on Main Street, to have, uh, somebody bicycle up from the trail. And visit downtown, you know, go to business and and those seek those services there. But it's not necessarily a, you know, bike route. Um, and and that's, this is still, you know, preliminary and we're going to preliminary design. So, you know, if if that direction changes, if we want Route one oh nine Main Street to be a bicycle corridor or where we want a five foot bicycle path. Uh, we could talk about that. Um, it's it's not out of the question. Other communities have it. Uh, I I feel pretty strongly we want to slow traffic out there to do it. But, um, for instance, uh, when we, uh, did our roadway preservation job on Main Street last year from Old Mill up to Berwick Road. Uh, we left the opportunity there for a five foot shoulder in case that was that was gonna happen. So we're trying to kind of hedge our bets, I guess, a little bit. But, um, but right now, the way we've been talking about is it's a separate but parallel facility for the bicyclists.
Um. Thank you for that reminder that that, um, I'm remembering that now. And and my husband is other thinking that, you know, we should just ride with cars, but I'm a little bit nervous about that myself. Thank you.
I I just have a quick comment.
Please.
Uh, along the line of of, uh, what Director Hill is speaking to. Um, my son lives down in Philadelphia and Philadelphia, they have a Schuylkill, I believe that's how you pronounce it, Schuylkill River. Uh, trail system goes all along the river for miles and miles and miles. Well, that that's a great, well-kept up, uh, trail system. However, you cannot move on that thing, uh, probably from three o'clock in the afternoon, and I'm talking about in the summer. To, you know, late it late into the evening. It is just packed with people, bikes, um, a- all kinds of stuff. So I think that we should take some caution from some of these experiences. And do exactly what what we're we're, uh, talking about here is divide up at least the pedestrian traffic from the bicycling traffic. Uh, and and have, uh, alternative spaces, uh, for each. Uh, I think accessing the downtown from the, uh, Washington Street area is a a great idea for for bike bicyclists, uh, and and so on. But, uh, when these things become popular, we they're not real popular, real, real popular right now. But when they become real popular, uh, they can they can be, I I drove by somebody who had gotten hit by a bicycle. There was a police officer there, a young girl on the side of the of the, uh, of the trail, uh, things like that. Uh, so, you know, we we want to at least, um, uh, be cautious in how we develop these things. And I think we're on the right, uh, path, uh, to coin a phrase here. Uh, so, thank you.
That phrase is yours, Bob. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council or comments from the council?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I know that Diane Connolly has a question or a comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I have a question, uh, regards to your comments, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the funding of it. Um, I was looking at the packet and I'm looking at two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty three River Street. Are is the idea to pull some of the funding for this from the bond to fix our streets?
I I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So, uh, the bond monies, uh, were for this year's construction. And I've actually got an update that's going to be coming up in in the next couple, one or two council meetings. But just a a report on on what went on this year as far as construction, reconstruction activities. Uh, but as far as the engineering money that would go forward, uh, fund this and fund fund future engineering towards the downtown. Is all money that had been previously programmed for engineering efforts, uh, within Sanford. So it would be, um, for instance, uh, next year I had programmed, uh, and this is out of the CIP. So the, uh, the capital improvement program, not the bond. But I had programmed in there, uh, Steve's bringing it up here. Uh, but basically, uh, over on the right hand side, uh, illustrates, you know, where we can, lack of better word, uh, rob or or. Transfer money, I guess. Let's 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 call it, move 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 the pieces around a little bit here. So I had programmed in there, uh, um, engineering, uh, North Ave, uh, Brook Street, which is from two oh two to High Street and Spruce Street. Uh, and that was programmed in there actually for a reason. Uh, but if we were to not do that and and go and divert that to Main Street, that's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we could free up. And and earmark towards main DOT's, uh, participation. The reason those three streets were, uh, programmed for engineering was that, uh, main DOT is coming through on Route two oh two Cottage Street. And they may be putting, uh, drainage mains down those street to drain Cottage Street. Uh, I've been working with them very closely to figure out, you know, what their preferred alternatives are, and, uh, they haven't made up their minds yet. So, um, I feel like it's a better investment at this point and and, you know. All things being equal, if they decide to come and put drainage down those street, they'll just basically leave the leave a paved trench when they're done. Um, this, that money was in there for engineering in order to engineer those streets. And once they put their trench in, we come over the top of them and and put, uh, construction down on top. So that that was for twenty one, uh, and twenty two, uh, next page, I'm drawing a blank here. Are you able to? There it is. Yeah. Okay. So again, uh, Northbrook and Spruce are are kind of the minor collectors for this neighborhood. So similar to what we were doing on West Side, this would be engineering that we're talking about for this twenty twenty two. This is the engineering for East Side. So so by focusing on the downtown here, we have to push a couple of things back. So this is engineering, uh, basically the East Side neighborhood. Uh, it doesn't remove it from the schedule, it just pushes it to a subsequent year.
Okay, cause the reason I'm asking the question is that there was one or two streets that were pushed to. that were pushed to 2021 because of problems that were found. And I just want to make sure that, you know, when the people okayed the bond, that they're getting their streets done as per the bond. That's all. I think the PPI is a great idea, and I like it a lot. I just want to make sure that people are getting what they're paying the bonds for and what we said yes to. That's all.
Right. And so out of the bond, out of the streets that were identified in the bond, there's actually only two we didn't get to this year, being Railroad Ave and Berwick Ave. Railroad Ave, our contractor unfortunately backed out at the last minute, and we weren't it was a contractor, it wasn't a paver. And then Berwick Ave, the paver didn't get to that one. So.
Right. And those are problems that were unforeseen or at least one of those streets, and that I understand. But thank you very much for answering the question.
Diane, and I do remember having conversations when we were discussing the the projects that we would be doing that we were focused on Main Street as part of it, because we were doing a lot of areas around the Main Street project too in preparation for Main Street. So I think Main Street was always planned as part of this, and I think it's just tweaking here and there depending on when things come up and when priorities or opportunities come up.
Right. And I agree. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's the council has heard a lot of flack about roads and potholes, and I want to make sure that it's going to get done. You know, and that we're like, like Mr. Hill said, robbing Peter to pay Paul, and something, you know, doesn't get done because you push money somewhere else. But I understand the Main Street has to get done. Thank you very much for answering the questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else as far as questions or concerns as it relates to Matt's presentation?
Well, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the important part is with this partnership that's ongoing, so the PPI paid for the initial engineering work that's been completed to date. Director Hill is asking for the ability to negotiate with $200,000 with MDOT for the next phase of engineering. What we really haven't talked about is the amount of funding that stems to come from the MDOT work plan that that Main Department of Transportation will fund under their work plan as opposed to what we'll have to fund coming out of our own Streets and Roads CIP. So that's that's the major piece of this whole partnership initiative is to keep that working relationship going with MDOT and access as much of their funding to accomplish this project, which will then release funding that we would have programmed otherwise for other projects within our own community.
So their funding on the state side would be in the millions of dollars, as I understand. Is that, are we in the ballpark there?
Yeah, the preliminary estimate from VHB for the full reconstruction was on the order of $10 million.
Okay. So to not sort of pursue this, we'd be leaving money on the table, and we'd have to at some point distant future, come up with that kind of money locally to get that project done outside of this partnership.
You know, and V, Main DOT would also probably make a strong argument, like, say, we do a survey today. They said basically that the survey is probably good for three or four years. And if we want to come back to that at some point in the future, and that survey is outdated, then they're going to ask for, you know, now we have to start repeating steps. And over efforts and maybe times have changed and other variables. Right now, I feel like we've got a really good handle on concurrent activities, and they're all encapsulated in this report.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other other questions on this?
But I just want to clarify to Diane Connolly's point. As we rearrange the funding, I guess, I'll ask Director Hill, as the funding is rearranged in the bond, that will not affect the road schedule at all.
Well, so you're talking about the, so the bond is expended. Okay, so we're talking about capital improvement program.
Okay.
Will it affect the schedule of the capital improvement program? Yes, absolutely. If you if you don't do the engineering on the East Side neighborhood in 2022, it's not going to be built in 2023 or 24. You know, you are you're moving pieces along so that you can fit other pieces, you know, you're moving pieces around.
Okay. So that was discuss that property subcommittee, a good conversation around that. Really, the feeling, I guess, was about priorities. Is a is a street on a neighborhood more important than a downtown? That really is what it came down to. I mean, obviously, it's a series of streets and it's a neighborhood. But as far as the return on investment and sort of the urgency of those needs, we felt that the downtown corridor was really the higher priority at this point.
And I don't disagree with that at all. I just was looking for some clarification around our our street fix-up that we're doing. And and so, but I mean, I certainly understand and support. You know, it's, I don't know, you invest 200, 200,000, you get 10 million back. It's hard to argue with that. But also, somebody who's waiting for their their street to be redone and did vote for the bond, I think need to be sensitive to that that issue also. So.
Hundred percent. And just to clarify that bond, I mean, as Matt said, it is it is expended. So that that bond has been been utilized. It's done. The the roadwork to follow basically is in the plan that we, as a council, committed to fund CIP at an elevated level, and I assume that will continue to occur and that those projects will get accomplished. It's, yeah, this $200,000, although, you know, delays those specific projects, roadwork and paving is is going to continue at a very aggressive pace, based on the, you know, the increase in CIP that we've all committed to.
Okay.
Just to frame that a little bit.
Yeah. And I think that's important information to 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 get out to the public who are, again, going to be concerned, you know, when's my street going to be fixed, you know, that kind of stuff. So.
And I get to know from Diane just basically saying she supports the Main Street corridor. And I felt that was the case. I mean, it's just like it's solid points. I mean, you know, if you're living on Island Avenue and you thought your roads would get done in two years, you're kind of scratching your head. But that 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 conversation is outside of the bond. That's that's part of the the normal yearly conversation we have around CIP. And, you know, right now, unfortunately, we can't do everything. We may get to that point eventually where we can just, you know, flick the switch and things get done, but not not currently. Okay. Anything else, City Councilor, on this?
Let me know when you find that switch, Tom.
I don't know. We're playing the lottery still, I hope. Okay. Any other, any other comments from anyone?
I think there'll be further understanding when Director Hill presents at the, well, probably it will be the next meeting, ask him to hold on the presentation till he finished up the scope of works for this year. But he'll he'll go over the scope of the work that was achieved this year with the bond funding and then take these kind of changes into consideration, and we'll put that back into the ongoing projects for the ensuing years as to how it shakes out from start to finish. So I think it'll be a stronger understanding when that presentation is done in a couple of weeks.
Excellent.
And just just to add one more thing.
Yeah.
There's probably no scenario where the city's not invested somehow in the ultimate construction of downtown, whether it be underground utilities or concrete sidewalk. If the city wants bells and whistles with the project, we'll be at the table. Hopefully, we'll be leading the charge. But basically, you know, when that when that time comes, we're going to have a financial seat at the table, too.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay. Final words? That it?
Do you need a mo, do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I believe we have a motion in the second summit. Roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tunnel?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Matt. Again, my kudos to the team and appreciation for all the folks that have had hands in this. I know it's across multiple divisions of the city, so thank you. All right. Next up, 20-184.01, order to accept a bid from Jordan Equipment for a compact truck loader with attachments and trailer in the amount of $99,192.75. So a motion?
Slow move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Excellent. And I know that Allison's still with us, right?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Allison Avia. I'm the airport manager to speak on this tonight. So if you'll remember, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the maintenance contract and the proposal that we were going to submit to NextEra Energy to be able to make some revenue from all the vegetation management associated with the new solar project that just became fully active on the airport. This is part of that. First, we need to procure all specialized equipment that we need to do that. Discuss this at the property subcommittee, and there is an issue of timing to be able to accept this right now with the uncertainty that they're going to accept the proposal. Because it's a big corporate machine, NextEra Energy, it's taking a little bit longer than we thought to go through all of their different approval processes. So I was able to speak with Joel Walker, who's in charge of the operations portion of their company, and he said that they're on the right track to get it done, but he just couldn't meet the timeline to be able to give us a final answer before this evening. So I would request that we table this so that we can accept the bid. I was able to talk to Jordan Equipment, and they said that they would hold the bid for us for longer than 30 days. We have to do that with the holidays to be able to meet next, because we repeat our in our test, and by the next evening, I should be able to have that firm proposal accepted for NextEra, so that we're comfortable with making the extension of the revenue to pay for it.
All right. So you're a little bit up there, but my understanding is that you're looking for a table on this, and we can make some adjustments down the next couple of weeks, once we get the final authorization from NextEra.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
The number is 100% final.
Okay, perfect.
Make a motion, we table, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, the table is five to zero. We look forward to more information on that, Allison. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay. And lastly, tonight, 20-193.01, order to confirm and appoint Aaron McCann as city treasurer and tax collector for the city of Sanford effective December 21st, 2025. Motion?
A moved.
Second.
Okay.
I'll take the, I'll take the explanation on this. In your packet, there's a memo on this. So I'd like to go through that for the for the viewing public. So our long-term tax treasurer and treasurer and tax collector, Paula Simpson, she's retiring at the end of this year after 28-plus years. We conducted a, so first and foremost, I want to recognize the exceptional work that Paula has continued to do for us over the last 28 years. I'm going to miss her dramatically. She is she is a key component in our organization. She's the detailed person that keeps us all on track. She does her job exceptionally well. But everybody retires at some point, so she's given us plenty of notice. So we conducted a very large search for a qualified person. The city was fortunate. We found a very well-qualified person who has accepted our offer. We've extended that. She's actually started for the city last week, and we did some job shadowing. She's off this week. She had a planned period to be off before she was hired, so we honored that as well. Pursuant to the city charter of 402.3, the appointment of the city treasurer and tax collector are subject to confirmation by the city council by resolutions. Bringing that forward for you tonight for that consideration. Also, further under state law, Title 36, Chapter 105, municipal offices shall appoint a tax collector to whom they will commit taxes and so perfect such collections pursuant to this law. So let me talk about the tax collection piece at the end of this portion. The office of the city manager, having completed the search and hiring process, we have selected Aaron McMahon. So as far as qualifications are concerned, Ms. McMahon has 20 years of municipal experience with extensive knowledge in tax collections, clerk operations, and school finance. She is a certified tax collector and a member of the MMTCPA. She is a certified motor vehicle agent and Bureau of Motor Vehicle and does Bureau of Motor Vehicle Training. She's a certified Moses agent and has seven years of supervising employees in municipal tax as well as city clerk's office. So this current treasurer and tax collector position oversees the clerk's office, I say that collectively. So she has extensive experience in that area as well. She was the assistant treasurer for the city of Portland, been there for a number of years. Prior to that, she was a deputy tax collector in the city and city clerk for the city of Westbrook. She's worked as an account specialist for St. Joseph's College, and she's also worked as an account clerk, too, in the city of Portland. One of the things that we enjoyed when we were interviewing Ms. McMahon was that her extensive experience in learning all of these aspects of the jobs that should be overseen from the ground up, as well as the relevant experience that she's going to be necessary to perfect the performance as treasurer and tax collector. So she's been the assistant treasurer for the city of Portland for the past five years, and during that time, she assisted the treasurer in all aspects of the job, including supervising and training staff, cash management, your motor vehicle reporting, software conversions, and more. For working there as the assistant treasurer in Portland, she also worked as a deputy tax collector and deputy city clerk for the city of Westbrook. While in that position, she supervised the CSR positions, oversaw voter registration, vital statistics, dog licensing, your motor vehicle, business licensing, personal and property tax collection, assisted in processing AP, payroll for both the school and city, and various other duties. She's very pleased to learn that she would not be processing payroll for the entire city under her duties as treasurer. So that was a great relief. As far as timing, she's currently working in parallel with Ms. Simpson in acclimating to our city's operations and becoming familiar with our system. As the city manager, I'm asking you to pass the resolution as you see below and make her effective as our treasurer and tax collector for the city of Sanford effective December 21st of 2020. Timing of that is directly related to a continued parallel training with with Ms. Simpson. For the December 22nd council meeting, assuming that she's she's so confirmed by the city council and so appointed this evening, at the December 22nd meeting, we will bring you a complete reconciliation. Paula Simpson, our current treasurer and tax collector, has been working with with Shana Mueller at Bernstein Shore, our finance and bonding bond counselor, on the perfection of the recommitment of the city's taxes. So on December 22nd, we'll present for that evening the current reconciliation of outstanding taxes that are currently committed to Ms. Simpson and ask for the city council to review and recognize that reconciliation, accept that reconciliation, and so commit those taxes from that point forward to Aaron McMahon as our treasurer and tax collector. That will relieve Ms. Simpson from those duties just prior to her retirement less than two weeks thereafter. It would have those committed to Ms. McMahon, and we'll move forward in a seamless transition at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
One, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does she have any experience in banking and investments, Stephen?
She has experience in working with with banking and extensive aspects as far as that is concerned. What she does not have, and we recognize this in other candidates as well, what she does not have is the direct experience of being the person that issues the RFP for banking, the request for proposals for banking and/or investments. We worry far less about that because we have those templates that's available to us in-house. The RFP is a process that comes through our purchasing policy, goes through the city council for their review and acceptance. So she does not have that direct experience at this point in time.
Thank you.
As far as investments in the portfolio, she has managed the investment portfolios. But at this point in time, she would become responsible for the timing of laying those investments out, which is a key component in there. I know that Paula will focus with her on that as well. Ms. Simpson also has offered her services, should they be needed going forward, to come in on a periodic basis to continue to train and assist during this transition. I do want to note that Paula, because she is so conscientious of her work product over the I, I, I do want to note that Paula, because she is so conscientious of her work product over the last 28 years, she wants to, uh, ensure that there's a successful transition and that all of the systems and services she's put in place and managed all of these years was forward seamlessly. We're very fortunate in that regard.
Can I, one request to you, when Erin McMahon actually starts, could, could, and I, I assume she's going to be at the meeting, that Paula does the sort of the transition responsibilities and sort of, um, the, the update, uh, as far as the funds and things of that nature?
She will, and I can actually have her here for the, the first meeting in December. She was just not, was not available for this evening to, for you to meet her, you know, face-to-face online, so to speak.
Yeah, throughout COVID, some of the, the hires have been hired and, you know, just have no sense of, of, you know, we know the names, but it, it's difficult to get a face as well. So inevitably, one of these days, this is all going to be over. It'd be nice to, you know, at least have a name and a face. You know, it, it's, it's Ms. McMahon's night, but I do want to acknowledge Paula's service and we'll see her, like you said, in a couple of weeks. But, you know, Paula's just been a pleasure to work with, obviously, and just, uh, just a very nice person. And, uh, that's, that's made, I guess, her, her role here, um, easier to a certain extent, but also has gained her, you know, ultimately respect, uh, from everybody that, that we've dealt with. It's just, uh, she's universally liked and, and acknowledged for her hard work. And she's definitely a worker and probably takes us all a little too personally. You know, and, and she and I have had that conversation a couple of times and, uh, but she, she wears it on her sleeve and puts it all out there. So thank you, Paula, for the years. And, uh, you'll, you'll be missed for sure.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to comment briefly if I could. Yeah, I, I would agree that the years that Paula has served, uh, I remember, uh, her father showed me a picture of her and Norman Hall, who was a, from a, a long-time selectman in Sanford and had Paula in his office when I think she was three years old. So I guess it was meant to be, Paula, we've been lucky to have you and, uh, and you're going to be a hard person to replace.
All right. Any more acknowledgements of Paula in upcoming weeks will, uh, give her a good send-off on, on whichever meeting she, she attends. Okay. So any further questions, comments?
No.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries five to zero. Congratulations, Erin McMahon. Look forward to meeting you in person. All right. That's the end of the, um, agenda for this evening. Councilmember comments? Council Hanselman?
Uh, thank you. Of course, I get to be the first one to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, but I also just want to share how grateful I am to have had the opportunity to be on the city council the last couple of years and have another year to go and, uh, have met some great folks and really looking forward to this upcoming year. And Sanford has a lot of really amazing, awesome things happening. And I, I think we need to celebrate that more often in our community. Uh, just grateful for our community right now. Have a great night.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Council Stackpole?
Yeah, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy your holiday as best you can and stay safe.
Excellent.
G'day, Mr. Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right. And Council Hurley?
Um, just, I, I, I would be amiss if I did not take this opportunity allowed as a city councillor to thank the Sanford Fire Department and the surrounding fire departments for the work they did last Tuesday afternoon in putting out a car fire in the townhouse garage, which is my apartment complex. Uh, my tenants enjoyed a great social hour next door at our other building while they took care of mop up and making sure the hallways were clear of smoke. Thankfully, because my grandfather liked purchasing and building concrete buildings, uh, there was, uh, very, um, there was damage and there's smoke and there's cleaning to do. But for the most, um, for the most part, we were back to normal that evening and my tenants were, were able to return to their apartments. So a shout out to Dolly and Sanford Fire Department, but all the local fire departments that, um, swung by to make sure. It was put out because we were a large building and I know there's always a fear when you have a large building. But my parents' carrier thought I had, uh, wood floors because they're so black. All you really see is the fact that there's the, the old wood forms, like the, the imprint of the wood forms. I assured him, no, that's nine inches of concrete above your head. And that is thankfully one of the main reasons that we don't have a great deal of spread if anything happens in the garage. So again, thank you and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
As long as it wasn't your car, Laura.
Uh, no, I, I, no. I, well, I was not going to say anything about the cause. It was, it definitely wasn't the fault of, uh, anything I was doing, for sure.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I want to remind everyone to be safe. Uh, lots of, lots of college kids coming home from around the region and around the country and, uh, mine included. And, and just, uh, you know, obviously recognize that, that they are traveling and they're coming into your home and in the community and please just be thoughtful, be safe, uh, wear your masks and keep your distance, please. And, uh, we'll, we'll get through this and it's, it's encouraging to be talking about, you know, a vaccine and the horizon and, uh, there'll inevitably be an end to this hopefully here in, uh, the near future. So, uh, I'm, I'm definitely thankful for that. I'm thankful for my family. Mom, Dad, love you. And, uh, well, thank you for watching every couple of weeks here for the last seven years. And, uh, you know, we're, we're almost there, almost at the end. And that's, that's what I had. Any, any future agenda items?
Not now, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
It's the holiday weekend, it's alone.
Yeah, well, everybody's tired out. Everybody's getting prepped for the turkey, so.
Lucas, we're all, we need you.
Have a great night, uh, be well, be safe. And, uh, well, actually, hold on, I'm sorry, and I forgot, I forgot. Matt Hill actually asked me to, uh, allow him a, a quick preview of a meeting in Matt's space, my apologies.
Uh, all great comments from everybody. I loved it. A shameless plug, uh, Patrick Adams from Main DOT is one of their multimodal guys. Uh, invites everybody to join Sanford Main DOT in the Bicycle Coalition of Maine for their second forum on pedestrian safety, delving into the risky behaviors and attitudes of both drivers and pedestrians. Uh, the, the meeting will explore possible strategies to help make the streets of Sanford safer, learn about Sanford's current efforts and how you can get involved in making your community safer. Uh, the meeting is upcoming on September 3rd from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. It's advertised on the city's webpage and on the city's Facebook page.
You said September 3rd? You said September, Matt.
Sorry, December.
December. There we go.
So it's September's the evening. Okay, just give us, so December 3rd at what time, Matt?
December 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And the, uh, the link is on Sanford's Facebook page.
Got it. We get, is possibly with the link, uh, on our calendar as well, maybe work with Larissa to get it on the calendar if it's not already there.
I believe she is, yep.
With all the details. Okay.
Thank you for the shameless point.
You got it. No problem. I, I, I do want to add, the meetings in December, I believe, are the 8th and the 22nd. Do I have that right, City Manager Buck?
You do. Thank you.
I, I thought I was going to be off the hook after the 15th, but it appears, uh, it's going to be one more week after that. So the, the, the 8th and the 22nd will be our meetings, um, and then we'll wrap it up. So that's, uh, that's all we have for this evening. Thank you, everybody, uh, for your time and patience tonight. And, uh, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Good night. Good night all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Take care.